The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you folks for joining us this evening. First up on our agenda, we have the approval of our routine business items. Sorry, that was distracting. Whatever that noise kicked on right as I was getting ready here. First up, we have the minutes of the regular Board of Education for October 12th. You'll also see the minutes for the Committee on Special Ed for the dates listed, as well as the minutes on the Committee of Preschool Special Education for the dates listed as well. If there's no discussion on those items, I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you Amanda, seconded by Heidi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, that will carry. In addition, we also have to approve the special meeting minutes from our October 27th meeting, Board of Education meeting as well. I would entertain a motion to approve those if there's no further discussion on those. Thank you Amanda, seconded by Heidi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, that will carry. We do have some students here presenting tonight for some student recognition. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ward and our students, do we have on present?
Yeah, so one of the best things that I've been able to do at board meetings over my career is to bring in students who are doing great things, representing our school, or just working hard every day in our school. So I, by happenstance, was at something very important to our school district, a presentation by the Commissioner of Education, as well as our Regent, and got there, and started listening to these students provide this presentation to superintendents from local school districts, and then these high-level State Education Department officials. And I'm still learning student names, to be perfectly honest with folks. Especially if they don't go to school in our building all day, I'm having a hard time learning those students' names because I don't see them. So they introduced the students who are going to present, and the first student presenting, that was chosen to present and did a fantastic job, was a student from Hudson Falls. The second student was from Hudson Falls, and then a third student was from Hudson Falls. And I was able to get a little bit of time after the presentation and catch the students and get a picture of them with the Commissioner of Education of New York State, which doesn't happen very often. I get the opportunity, so far twice, in a 21- or two-year career, as a school administrator, a teacher before that, and to catch these students and get a picture with the Commissioner of Education, as well as our Regent Beverly Odiker, was like a once-in-a-lifetime thing, so I took advantage of it. But just so proud to hear these students represent our school so well, and actually represent the programs right up at Adrona Community College, 208K, along with the BOSI's programs. So I asked them that day, I said, "You don't know me, and really, I don't know you. Would you guys be willing to come to a board meeting so you could be recognized and maybe talk a little bit about the programs that you're in, and the career paths that might be taking you down?" And I know they're good speakers, because I've seen that in front of a much larger audience. I did mention to them, we have a couple million followers that watch the YouTube video there. I may be exaggerating the number just a little bit. But I wanted to have our President of the Board of Education, Mr. Ben Bishop, present certificates to the three gentlemen that are here this evening. And I already went out and thanked them and met their parents. And I'm feeling a little bit old this evening, because one of their parents, I didn't have her in class, but I was teaching in her high school when she was a senior, and I remember that now. So, thank you for making me feel as old as I guess I am. But first up, if we could present the certificate to...
Sure, yeah, it'd be my honor.
Kayden Palmer.
Now, I'm just starting to feel a little bit old too, because I had the pleasure of coaching Kay as a fifth and sixth grader through football, so it's grown up a little bit gradually.
And Kayden, if you want to hang out right there, I think we'll introduce all three of you gentlemen, then we'll have you all take turns talking. So I'll give...
I'll announce and you can...
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, actually, we'll do, sorry. Next, Connor Bogardis. Yeah, we'll get him. And last, but by no means least, Ethan Herrick.
I want to get a photo of President Bishop and my co-host with you at the stage. I didn't tell you this was going to...
But it's picture night, so we're all...
That's fantastic. I want to shake your hands again, guys. And I just want to give you a couple minutes, if you don't mind, talking to the board about the program you're in, and what's done for you, and what might be leading you. We'd really like, I think it'd be great for them to hear from you.
Yeah.
Awesome, thanks, guys. Turn it over to you, it's on. Will they, they have to be at the mic?
Yes.
If they could come to the table, that would be great.
I think if you guys can come here, so we can use this...
Is that, is that red?
It's red, so that means it's on, right?
That definitely means it's on, yeah.
So this will pick you guys up.
If you could present to the board, that would be great. But whatever works, you guys know, you can work the crowd.
So, as you heard, my name is Kayden Palmer. I'm a senior here at Hudson Falls. And I just, I want to start off by thanking all you for, who vouched for this program years ago, back when I was still little, to bring it to Hudson Falls. Because this has given me tremendous opportunity to take control of my future. I'm earning a ton of credits, dual enrollment, graduating high school, and partially getting credits in college. So I'm saving, and it's basically at no cost. So I'm saving a bunch of money, and I'm saving a lot of time as well, because I'm able to, so much work I can get done now instead of having to do it later. So I just want to thank all you guys for that. It's great. Thank you.
Which program are you in?
Oh, I'm in Advanced Manufacturing.
Advanced Manufacturing, excellent. Who wants to be number two?
I'll go next. My name is Ethan Herrick. I'm a senior here at Hudson Falls, and I do the Advanced Manufacturing Program as well, through the PTEC program, as well as ECCA. I'd like to thank you all for inviting us here tonight. It's an honor to stand in front of you, to tell you what we do on a daily basis. Through our program, it presents us with machinery that we find in our real-world jobs, and our business partners own these machines themselves. So we get to learn how to use this very expensive machinery at no cost. And it's nice, because most people aren't presented with the opportunity to use such machinery. So to be able to use state-of-the-art technology with programming these machines to automatically create whatever we desire. So it's a great opportunity that we have presented.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Connor Bogardis. I'm a part of the IT program and the ECCA program. As the same with the Advanced Manufacturing, in this program, we have hands-on learning with real-world technologies and devices that without this, I, the first time I'd be seeing these things would be in a real job. So it's invaluable experience, being able to go through this program. And not only that, but the ability to network with other people that are going in this profession. I may be meeting every day my future boss or my future employee, and these experiences are absolutely invaluable. And I would love to thank everyone for making this possible.
I appreciate it, gentlemen, and I don't know if anybody from the board wants to ask any questions. I didn't tell them we would be asking questions, right? You know how that goes. If you get up in front, you get to ask some questions. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you guys share maybe what else some of the businesses that you work with?
So with the Advanced Manufacturing Program, we have had the opportunity so far, it's very restricted with COVID, but we have visited Thai Metals, as well as...
Fort Miller.
Fort Miller Concrete. So it was nice to see, you know, the stuff we learn every day being applied in a real-world situation.
The IT program, we've had the opportunity to go through. Now, because of COVID, a lot of the in-person, like ventures that we might have made haven't been possible, but we managed to have meetings with sort of professionals in the program. And we've also had virtual tours and data centers, going through and learning what they're like. And, yeah.
Thank you. Any other, go ahead.
Mine's not really a question, it's just a comment. I just, you boys and everyone in your cohort just make me so proud, because you push yourselves with a harder curriculum, and it's a lot of work and a lot of effort. And I salute you, because it's going to take you places and it's going to keep you successful in life, not just in school. So I think you guys make us all very proud, and well done.
Thank you.
So thanks so much, and I just wanted to remind, so the board has probably changed over since we started with PTEC. But Hudson Falls was one of the flagship schools in the program when it did roll out. So I just wanted to share that piece, and I'm happy that Hudson Falls was one of the flagship schools, and certainly well before I got here. But certainly paying great dividends for these young men, as well as other students before them, and hopefully students after, I'm certain students after them. So, gentlemen, thanks so much. I really appreciate it. And I don't know if you'll end up having to come back and see us when BOSI's comes, because a lot of times you'll be asked to come back and talk about your programs again. So you may be in front of this group again. The board will work on some more questions for you, so they can really rake you over the coals. But thanks so much. It's nice meeting you, and I hope I get to see you some more in and out of your program. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Yeah, and then there was one more student that we wanted to recommend. I don't see her out there in the crowd, but the students, we did have a photo, I think, if you go to the next... So the picture of this student, that's Trinity Cruz. She was recognized as the October Student of the Month over at the Wish We BOSI's. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize her as well, because in order to receive that honor, she has done an awful lot of hard work in a lot of areas. And I just wanted to say how appreciative I am as a superintendent of Hudson Falls, and to give the board a chance to express their appreciation for the hard work that she's put in. We recognize over there as well. So we'll make sure she gets her certificate. Again, she's another student who doesn't attend here every day, so it's a little more difficult, but we'll make sure that she receives it. So congratulations to her as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, and thank you to the three young men who were able to attend tonight. I've said this before, but I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think our favorite part of being a board member is always hearing from students and hearing about the enriching experiences that you guys are having. So no thanks is necessary to us, I appreciate that. But you three and some of your other classmates are the ones that are doing that work. And, you know, we're proud to be able to offer, you know, maybe some non-traditional pathways for you guys, and glad to see that you're enjoying it and getting a ton out of it. So thank you again for coming tonight. You're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of our evening, but also realize it's a school night, and it's kind of like your Thursday, because you have Thursday off. So I can understand if you don't want to stay. But either way, you're welcome to stay if you'd like.
I just wanted to mention, so I didn't, I wanted to just also thank the parents for whatever you're doing to support these kids, and for whatever you're doing to make them want to be a part of this program, and your piece in helping them be successful in the program. And I should have said that at the beginning, but we haven't been able to do student recognition at too many of our meetings since I started. So I want to let you know, parents, I appreciate you as well, and thank you so much. And I won't leave out Anne Little Brother back there too. Whatever you're doing, whatever you're doing to push your brother along, we truly appreciate it. Like President Bishop said, if you want to hang out for the next two hours with us, you are welcome. If you want, if you want to go now, if you want to go, have a great night. Thank you so much.
Have a great evening, folks.
Sorry, I forgot to do my...
That's okay, no worries. No problem, no problem. Well done. So we'll move back into our regular agenda here. Next up is public comments. Do you have any public comments this evening? No? Okay. I don't have any new president's reports updates, so with that, we'll get right into our personnel, or I'm sorry, our committees. First up is our Personnel Committee. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lepan for the Personnel update.
Okay, thank you very much. Pretty straightforward, again, in Personnel. I do want to recognize, you know, Tom Murphy for his almost two decades of service for the school, and he is retiring, as is Tammy Steiniger. A few transfers, we had a couple, and, you know, I don't want to leave out Brandon Birch for his service as well for the district. And, you know, these guys are really instrumental in pushing us to the next phase of technology, and they do a stand-up job. And so it's always appreciated, these guys, and when one of them leaves, it's tough to find somebody as good as somebody we had. And also, you know, a couple of transfers, a few leaves of absences. And I also, I guess lastly, would like to welcome Carleen Higgs as our new band director. So that's kind of exciting, and it seems like an exciting position for her and for us to have her here as well. And I guess this is the last thing, you know, again, from Personnel perspective, thank you very much to everybody from the beginning of the day to the end of the day, who helps to, you know, in this hard time, to get these kids to school safe, educated, home. A big thank you, appreciate it. It's not easy. So thank you to all the teachers and staff.
I just, I want to recognize three staff members. So just, I didn't give this list to you, Matt, I apologize. But three staff members to mention tonight. Matt Heath, Middle School Associate, was recognized as the TCT Teacher of the Week this school year already. Derain Miller, Middle School Spanish, also recognized this year as the TCT Teacher of the Week. And then Kelly Heath was recognized, she's our high school librarian, recognized as a WSWH, BOSI's School Library Systems Rising Star last week.
Excellent.
So actually, no, this week, sorry, this week. So just wanted to say that we've got people, we know everybody's doing a great job. We had some that got some special recognition, so we wanted to just get that out there so everybody can hear that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Anybody have any questions on Personnel? As you guys know, Personnel is done through consent, so if there are no questions or no objections, Personnel will carry. Hearing none, we will move forward. I'm going to pinch it for Mr. Gallin here on Athletics, as he could not attend this evening. But Athletic Committee did meet this month, recognized some, you know, fall updates. Our golf team had a very great year, won sectionals. And additionally, our girls volleyball team also had a very strong season as well. And I'm sure I'm leaving some other sports out. But, you know, I think, again, I don't want to speak for the Athletic Committee, but very happy with the work that Coach Carpenter and our coaches were able to accomplish this year. You know, from not only a results standpoint, but also from a systems perspective, as far as, you know, Coach Carpenter being able to hold a parent night, set expectations early in the season, I think, really helped with a lot of our athletic programs this year. And so that really, the infrastructure that he's starting to build, you know, really transitions into winter sports nicely. So when we met, we did have a handful of winter sports coaching vacancies at the time. Those have all since been filled, and you just approved those in Personnel as well. We also talked about sectionals and what are the qualifications for sectionals by different sports. And there's some upcoming Athletic Committee meetings that Ryan will be attending as well, that he'll fill the group on. But that was really the gist of it. We're glad to have those winter coaches, coach vacancies filled ahead of the season starting, which is great news. So, Mr. Ward, anything I missed that you think the group should be aware of?
Just a quick, it was a recap of the fall, it was kind of the look ahead to the winter. We're looking at full winter participation, although every day is a challenge to be in person in school, but that's where we're at right now. So we have basketball players, and wrestlers, and indoor track, and boys swimming and diving athletes, all looking forward to a season starting Monday the 15th, or at the varsity and JV levels, modifies shortly after that date. I don't have the exact date in memory.
Good, great, thank you, Mr. Ward. Anybody have any questions on Athletics? Okay, if none, we'll move forward to Audit, and I'm going to turn it over to Crystal for our Audit update.
Thanks, thank you, Ben. So I'll start with the Treasurer's report. We had this month in the General Fund about 8.6 million received, 3.1 million, and 3.5 in disbursement saving the balance of the site and 7.1 million in the General Fund. And our total cash balance is 7.1 million as of September. The extra peculiar accounts, there is certainly some movement now going on in these, which is great to see. Just wanted to call out, the class of 2023 raised almost $9,000 to the golf tournament. So that was kind of a very, obviously very successful event for them, so that was exciting. There's just a little bit of payment here and there for some different things. So that's good to kind of see some activities and stuff going on again. The monthly bills are also in your Board packet, if you have any questions on those. I think we have a Capital Area Health Insurance Consortium Trust Agreement Resolution that we need to do an approval on. Mr. Ward, did you want to add anything, or Kevin, on that?
I'm good with Kevin. Do you want to speak to the Capital Region Trust?
Thanks.
Basically, it's the resolution to, for our membership in McCashick, which is basically out of Albany. And we've been a member of it for many, many years, and it's more up to 19 school districts. And the only thing that's changed in the agreement is there's been an addition of approximately four to five more school districts into it, to get us up to 19. We've been very happy with it over the years. The rates and everything have been great, from my perspective. And this is a five-year agreement that we joined into, so just for the board to be aware of that. It's a five-year commitment.
Should we do approval on that now, or move on to the next item?
Sure, we can. So does anybody have any questions on the Health Insurance Consortium Agreement? For, well, I remember us maybe talking about it in my first year, Matt, so I think it's cycled at least once, and Mark would probably be familiar with it as well. But, you know, as Kevin pointed out, it's a semi-annual process here. So no changes to the actual agreement, just, you know, who's a member of that, which larger pools generally should only help our rates as well. So if there's no additional questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution to enter into the Capital Area Health Insurance Consortium Trust Agreement. Thank you, Crystal. In a second. Thank you, Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, that will carry. Yep, go ahead.
All right, next item on our agenda was the federal, we discussed a little bit about the federal allocations. We were kind of provided with just an update as to where we are. So this is money that has been part of the coronavirus federal funds that we need to allocate certain expenses to those funds, and then I believe they're reimbursed through the state. So Kevin just kind of walked us through that process a little bit, and looked at kind of where we were at with, you know, what we've spent so far and what the budget is. We also briefly talked about the Capital Reserve Fund, which would be part of our Fund Balance Directive Action item, one of the things on our list there. Kind of talked about some different options as to, you know, one, it would be good to recommend that for a budget vote approval, and I think our, the committee's recommendation would be different ways to do it with the budget vote. So more to come on that, I think, as we get closer to that deadline.
Yeah, well said, and I think one of the cool things about our committees is this is really a nice synergy that's happened between Audit and through Buildings and Grounds Committees, where it's different groups of people, but all working kind of towards the same goal of hopefully specking out and building a capital reserve fund, you know, to put in front of taxpayers for potential Phase Two and Phase Three of capital project, you know, down the road, whenever that time is. So, you know, more to come on that. We'll continue to plan through both committees. But again, just wanted to call that out. Yeah. We do need a motion as well to approve the Treasurer's report. Does anybody have any questions on the Treasurer's report? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Crystal. In a second. Thank you, Heidi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, that will carry. Anything else for Audit? Anybody have any questions on Audit? Anything we didn't cover? Yeah? Okay, all right, moving forward then. In your packets is the written transportation report. Dr. Steele isn't here as well. I don't know that there's a whole lot to call out here other than the similar trends that you've all heard about by now, as far as, you know, our DOT report. We had four units pass inspection, which is great, bringing us 57 out of 58 buses for the year, 98.3 success rate, which is really world-class, so hats off to our team. You'll also see the trip report there, the new vehicle report as well. The one thing I really just wanted to call out, they have added, were able to add an additional driver or a tenant to our roster, still short, looking for candidates. If folks at home know candidates that want to drive bus, give Tom Murphy a call, give Mr. Ward a call, give Mr. Palencia a call, we'd be happy to hear from those folks, because there is a serious bus driver shortage, not only here locally, but across the country as well. So just wanted to call that out. You'll see the prices listed there as well. Anything to add, Mr. Ward?
Yeah, so just one piece.
Sure.
I just want to commend Lori Beatlestein and Tom Murphy. I don't know that the folks in the public have noticed, or the parents have noticed, but there's been a lot of work done. The kids are coming to school today, everybody notices that. But we've had to consolidate runs, they've had to consolidate quite a few runs to make it so we could get every student here, and they're working all the time to make that happen. And I just wanted to put a shout-out to them, as well as the mechanics and those substitute bus drivers. They're not regular bus drivers, but everybody was picking up, picking up the pieces when things start to fall a little bit, because it's taken an awful lot of work. So I wanted to recognize that and just publicly say that, you know, we had Plan A coming into the school year. We're already at Plan B. We've had to consolidate those routes. Like Mr. Palencia had mentioned to folks before, it's been a lot of work, and those people deserve a lot of credit. So thanks to them, and thanks to all the parents who had to be adjusted by some time, and students who had to move to a different bus to make it so we could get everybody to school. Over the last about three to four weeks, we've been on Plan B to make sure we were able to get folks here.
Good call-outs. Thank you, Mr. Ward, and we'd obviously all echo your sentiments. It's not an easy situation, obviously, again, with the driver shortage, with folks in quarantine, with everything else that they have kind of stacked against them to be able to kind of continue to flex and, you know, come up with alternative routes and plans to get students here every day is great work, so thank you for recognizing that group. So thank you for recognizing that group. Anybody have any additional questions on transportation before we move forward? No? Okay, next up, we have Buildings and Grounds. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Ben. Buildings and Grounds Committee met on the 27th of October. We got a really good overview from our architect, Steve Whitman, about where we stand with capital project. All the plans and specs have been submitted to State Ed. There had been a few questions and a few minor tweaks that they had requested. Slowed the process down approximately three weeks. But the good news is that we're still on target to submit or to put out the bid on the original date of December 6th. So we're on target there. We will give the bidders about 30 days and they will be sealed bid openings in public. So that'll be, that'll be an interesting process. But again, we're still on track. A lot of the things that the architect had to deal with were very, very minor. Really not, not much of anything that had created any major impact on the project. So, so again, the good news is we're on target with our timing. And hopefully we'll get a lot of, a lot of activity from bidders out there in the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anybody have any questions on Buildings and Grounds? Did you have a question?
No, I didn't.
No, okay, no problem.
Sorry.
So there's just one thing. So very soon, we'll be issuing the District Commission RFP, Request for Proposals for Construction Management/Cork of the Work Services. So Kevin and I received the draft of that from Steve Whitman as follow-up to that meeting. He and I both reviewed it. We talked today about just a couple of minor changes to get that done. So Mrs. Hensel will be putting out the legal notification and that will be mailed out to the people who sent requests to have it mailed to them as soon as we get the final copy. So things are moving along since the beginning.
Great news. Thank you for that update. Okay, if there's nothing else on B and G, we'll move forward to policy. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Lansman for our policy update.
Okay, I am going to jump around a little bit in your board packet, if you all don't mind. We'll start with the second read, actually, 6160 about staff development. You'll see just the one red line in there. And it's pretty straightforward. This again is the second read, so we're going to approve that tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions on that one?
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the changes to Policy 6160, Professional Growth and Staff Development. Thank you, Crystal. In a second. Thank you, Heidi. All those in favor? Aye, great. That will carry. Go ahead, Amanda.
Okay, so then we'll go to letter A under the first, nope, I lied. Letter B, under the first reads. Policy 1510 about board meetings and rules. It is a current policy that we have. Erie One Bosse's shot over an update. It's essentially, it looks like they just moved paragraphs around, honestly. There's a little spot on there about public comments and just some guidelines, which we already have in place anyway, so it's really nothing new. We're just, they wanted to make sure we were up to date. So that's all that one is. And then letter A, the Social Service Dogs, is a new policy. And Mr. Ward actually had that in place in Fort Edward. And I believe, was it another school too? Did you have it in Fort Dan as well when you were there?
We, we were working on it at one point there. But there's other schools in our area that have similar policies.
So he thought that it was beneficial down there. He thought it would be beneficial here. And I'm actually going to turn it over to him to kind of just explain a little bit more about that.
Absolutely. So you actually have a Social Service Dog that was approved previous to me being here that's housed over at the middle school. And in hearing that, I just was looking for policy on that. And I did take some time in my previous district to work through a policy that worked really well to provide this support for students in our school district, as well as staff members. And we all know that there's a lot going on in the world right now. There's always a lot going on in the world. Anything we can do to support social, emotional needs of children and staff members, I think is a good move. I know the board has had a discussion about that and agrees. So what this does is it provides a procedure for me to evaluate those requests, along with the building principals and other affected members of a school community, the school building, I should say, to decide if that's going to be a positive impact on the school building and other mitigating issues that we need to look at, like a student who might be allergic or somebody who might be afraid and things like that before we approve it. Just wanted to have something in black and white. Board approved. There's also an application process that goes along with it. There's training that's required through AKC for the dogs. There's insurance that's required on the district's end and also on the individual owner's end. And it just spells out who has to do what. It allows us to have an appropriate process to make sure we're being fair and equitable to anybody who makes that request.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody have any questions on that policy? Okay, and then you'll see at the bottom, we still have DEI on there. It is still on our radar, just we haven't sat down and gotten to it yet. And that's it.
Good. Thank you, Amanda. Anybody have any additional questions on policy? Okay. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Andrew Kovacs for our advocacy and public relations update.
Okay, so we met on the 22nd of October. And the first thing we discussed was the, we recapped the Community Collaborative Committee. What our agenda had been at that meeting was to kind of take ownership of the different proposed plans and areas of growth that we had highlighted in our previous meetings. And so where we thought would make the most sense to start would be what we can change as a district, what we have, what we have power and control over. And so that was the beginning of some law enforcement clubs in the high school and middle school. We had surveyed the student body and there was an interest. And so we started the process for that, which I think is super for kids who want to go into law enforcement as a career. Really will provide them with insight in terms of when tests are available and what skills and classes you should be taking. And it also is relationship building, which is always a good thing. And then next on the list for our next upcoming meeting will be the mentor program. And we also, Mr. Ward contacted Ryan Carpenter, A.D., and we started collaborating with some of our community partners in terms of how the Health and Wellness Committee can make relationships in the community that can carry over the things that we all want to work on towards health and wellness. Since we met as an advocacy committee, I have seen on Facebook that the town of Kingsbury has pushed out that digital survey. I don't know if anybody else saw it. But the town of Kingsbury Master Planning Committee had approached Mr. Ward about using, utilizing the school district as a way to push that out to the community. So we started with the participation in government class. And then if that was successful, we're thinking about pushing it out on social media. But anybody who can find that survey, it's worth taking if you live in the town of Kingsbury. Because they're looking for feedback and haven't received very much of it at the time that we met. I don't know, maybe that's changed since.
Yes, so I'm just, I'll jump in quick. We have pushed it out since then. So we started with our participation. We did push it out through social. And I know Mr. Adam Zach is in the back, so he's the one who, I'll give him a thank you as well. He's the one who pushes it out for us. But Supervisor Hogan was very happy that we were able to help.
Awesome. So that's on our website right now.
They had, they were asking for feedback prior to today's date. So I'm not sure if it still is live there or not. We don't control it. We just linked to it for them.
I believe it is on the town of Kingsbury.
And also, we included it in an email newsletter that we sent out to every parent, I think, for two weeks in a row.
Perfect. Thank you.
And it was, it was, I just want to say thank you to Tony Nazavera. It's November, so I'm saying a lot of thank yous, right? Not that we shouldn't, every single month. But our, our high school social studies teacher, he's the person who took that and turned it around and pretty sure worked with our students. As a learning opportunity for them on, this is how things change in your community. So please pay attention, please participate. I wasn't there at his lesson, but that's kind of the message we're trying to provide, the lesson we're trying to teach our students with local government for certain. Sorry.
No, I loved it. Terrific. So next up, Dan had given us an update on the tentative, which we both see advocacy groups legislative priorities. Do you want to speak to those?
So they're still in draft, so I'm going to wait until.
Wait until they're finalized.
We get a final, yeah. But, but the process is similar to every other year. Although I do want to say out loud and in public that our group has been pretty successful in moving priorities through our advocacy at the state level. And it was, it was pretty challenging last year by not being able to go and sit with people. Everything was Zoom, right? Everything was Zoom, just like every, every other meeting folks had to do. But I want to thank the group here for supporting us in that. And also want to thank our legislators, if any of them are watching, and any local community folks that were a part of that. I want to appreciate them as well and say thank you.
Awesome. And then we also talked about, I recently attended the NISBA Business Meeting, which was a little clunky given the virtual format. But it was very interesting to see how NISBA moves, how they utilize all of the districts that they represent to really have a voice in what priorities are moved forward legislatively. So I'm looking forward to that again next year, now that I know what to expect. And hopefully it won't be virtual and it won't take quite as long and be as clunky. But it was really fascinating to see democracy like in superb action. We also discussed sharing bus drivers amongst school districts and also that we were letting Fort Dan use our soccer fields for some postseason play due to all of the rain making their fields unplayable. And just how school districts locally are really trying to help each other out in terms of lending support where one might need. And I think that that reciprocity is going to come back to help us in the future, probably. Also, I wanted to make a point to make sure everybody understands that Mr. Ward has been doggedly advocating with Washington County Public Health about testing out of quarantine or testing to stay in school. Right now, Saratoga is piloting a program like that. And whether or not Washington County decides yes or no on this, I just want our district to know that Mr. Ward is really, every day, putting effort into keeping as many school kids in our school physically in person as we possibly can and really promoting common sense strategies. So hat tip to Mr. Ward for advocating for our kids. The NISBA Annual Conference was free and virtual. I don't know if anybody tuned in. I had asked Danielle, I had sent an email earlier last week about whether, like what's the length of time that you can keep tuning in because there were some really good workshops? Some of them were only live and then recorded, but most of them were virtual, so you could access them. I haven't heard back yet. The next ASBA meeting is November 18th, which is the Thursday after our board meeting. And I would encourage anybody on our board that can to attend because that is the topic that Mark Gallo asked them to address, which was chronic absenteeism. This last ASBA meeting in October was very different than most ASBA meetings because we had so many political figures there. And so there were no active questions from the audience. It was just questions posed by the Wishbee Director to the Commissioner of Education and the Deputy Commissioner of Education for the state of New York. So it was a little scripted, but they had had a very long day. And this next one is going to be, I think, more interactive, more question and answer at the end. And it's super relevant to our school district. So anybody who can make it will carpool. It's usually a really informative evening, and I'm really looking forward to that discussion. And our next advocacy meeting is tentatively for November 17th, but I'm having some conflicts at work. So anybody on advocacy committee, be prepared for an email because I think we're going to have to figure out a different time regularly soon. And I think, if I haven't forgotten anything, that's all.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Heidi?
I do. So first thing, I just want to thank you for the time that you put in on that NISBA Business Meeting because that was not two hours, that was not three hours, that was not even four hours, right?
Longer than four hours.
Yeah, longer than that. So thank you. I just wanted everybody to know how long you were on that meeting. So thank you.
I really, I really appreciate it since I really volunteered you to. I had no idea what I was signing up for.
I think that's a great idea. So thank you for that. And then I didn't know if you had any more details on the law enforcement club that you had mentioned. Like, is it going to be kids being able to go into the department or officers coming here? Or what, if it has even been talked about yet?
I think Dan can probably speak more to this.
So I can speak to that. And the shorter answer is there's not a lot of details. So after we had our Community Collaborative Meeting that day, I was able the next day to reach out to Chief Gillis, Under Sheriff Wenzel, and New York State Police Recruiter AJ. I don't have the, I don't have the name. The other two I'm very familiar with. So all, all those departments are on board to do something. They all replied with, you realize things are really busy right now? And I get, I get that. And so our plan would be to try to find a time where HFPD, Kristin Hardy from Washington County Sheriff, she was the person that Under Sheriff Wenzel designated to be the person. And then A, Trooper AJ, I guess is the best way to say it, to get together in the same room and say, hey, what are we going to do? We see it so far, and again, this is really early, as a combination of them coming here to the school and trying to figure out how to get them exposed to maybe other, other areas of law enforcement, whether it be the DA's office or, you know, just other levels that are part of law enforcement. So it's, it's early. They're all wanting to be involved. It's just a matter of carving out the time. Everybody's, I know folks are tired of hearing it, but it's, it's a reality that everybody's short-staffed because of COVID. And these are things that come second to their number one job of providing safety and law enforcement. And I know that you come from a background, so you know very well. But we're on it. We'll follow back up with Chief Gillis. And because he kind of is the one driving the ship a little bit. And hopefully we can get together and meet over at his, his office over there in the basement of the HFPD building sometime between now and Christmas, maybe.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any additional questions for Heidi? Okay, thank you for your update, Heidi. And that will, let me see, I believe that concludes our committees. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ward for his superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I feel like I'm talking a lot tonight, so I apologize. I will say that I do like it much better here. I think it gives us an opportunity to speak to each other a little bit more. So if you want to, just click on for that. Are you there? Awesome. So just, just a few, there's a couple of quick hitters and some that take a little bit more time. So there's a biscotti company who has approached Warren Washington's IDA for a pilot agreement. And Mr. Palencia and I sat on that public hearing last week just to hear about the project. And as I said before to the board, we, as a school district, don't get to vote yes or no on these projects. So Warren Washington's IDA gets to make that decision all on their own. We can, however, get on those and ask questions. So I'm of the opinion that you get on and you, and you make sure that you're there and you ask the questions that you have, even if you know that you can't vote no in the end. Because you can at least raise a concern. We didn't have any concern with where it's going. It's going down in the industrial park on Casey Road, down by, is that Roselle's that's down there? By the airport, I forget the name of the, so down there close to where Roselle's is. So I don't see an impact on, on any, any residents with homes. Depending on what kind of tax abatement package they give them, certainly there'll be an effect. But it's a brand-new building being built that someday will come on the rolls, which to me means good for us. Because if it doesn't come, it'll never come on the rolls. So I would expect they're going to approve it. They don't do that at that meeting. They have the hearing and then they, they ask the questions they need. So we'll see. I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Palencia and I were on there and asked a few questions about kind of where it was going to be. And hey, I like biscotti. I'm glad that this business has gotten large and they're, they're expanding from Pennsylvania to Hudson Falls. Good for them.
I was going to ask, it's an Italian cookie, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what it really is. That's what it reacts. It's not something different.
We have a cannoli company?
Local test to stay. I've been, and thank you, Heidi, for mentioning it. I've been pushing hard for test to stay or test out of quarantine. I do want to tell you that it's, 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 it's been frustrating, but I continue to ask questions. I continue to try to come up with some solutions. I continue to offer Hudson Falls as a pilot opportunity for Washington County. I do realize. I do realize that Hudson Falls represents a much larger school district than the rest of the school districts in Washington County. You know, we're six times the size of many of the school districts. So we are an awful big bite to chew off of the Washington County piece for a pilot. Right now, Washington County is not there. Doesn't mean we won't keep asking. Some of the concerns are they have to be able to provide supplies to every school in the county to meet what the guidance from New York State says. Right now, there's a supply chain problem with the testing supplies. Luckily, we have enough here in district. And thanks to Jody Boucher and Kevin Wenshaw for last year forward thinking and buying some additional buyback tests. Because we're using those for our employee testing to keep our employees working here due to the testing requirement. We have enough, if we went to test to stay, we have enough on hand to probably get through one week before we would run out, unless the supply chain frees up. County and every other school district are seeing the same supply chain problem. So I understand what the county is saying. We're hopeful, and the last thing we asked, there's a group of superheads, not just me, but I do speak out because we have the most students and certainly the most positive cases around school districts, just saying, even if we don't have the supplies, can we have a conversation about what we'll do for test to stay if and when the supplies become available? Because let's be ready if this stuff opens up and shows up here. And I want to thank Jim Dexter for being a part of that conversation too. So more to come on that. I'll keep, we have a lot of kids who are quarantined. I understand the rules. I talked to a lot of parents about the rules. So do our building principals, so does Mrs. Henzel. But I understand it's frustrating for parents. I understand that completely. I want to tell you, we are doing everything we can to have as many kids here in school every single day. We absolutely are. But we're following the rules too. So it's a lot of work. And if we get a chance to do test to stay, we'd have a lot more kids here. You know, we have 200, I'm going to be close on this time. We have about 285 students excluded right now from school on quarantine, at least as of last Friday. And likely, and this is just my supposing, right? There's no science behind it. I would bet that if we tested those students, that over 200 of them would be in school every day. That being said, there's a cost associated with that testing. If we were to have to buy those ourselves, it would cost us about $6,000 per week if we could get the test. And I know that there's federal, I'm not trying to say that we don't have the money because there is federal money out there for this. But there's a cost associated with doing that. You've heard me say it before. If we have the money and the stuff comes available and that's how we get kids to school, we're going to spend it. And certainly I'd have to keep you guys up to date on that. But you know how I feel and I just want to say it publicly. If that's what it takes to have kids in school, we really have to talk about doing it because that's what our goal is. So I'll move on. Derby Park, can you click on that link? Yeah. So you folks are all probably, so what you're going to see when it comes up is the schematic of Derby. And if you've been by there, you know there's a huge pile of dirt. At least last week, I haven't been by this weekend, so maybe they've moved some of that dirt. So but they are planning on having that done this fall. Like the dirt will be leveled out. And Mayor Barton came to talk to us about formalizing the agreement that we have with the village for the district's use of that facility, as well as what part we play in maintaining that facility and any kind of funding we should be supplying for that facility. I don't want to go into details about that because that has to be talked about in the executive session because it has to do with negotiating a contract with a, it's called an intermunicipal contract. So we'll talk about that in the executive session. But I wanted to make sure I mention it in public. Want to be transparent about it, but the details we have to talk about in the executive session. Certainly any motion we make has to occur in public session. So a couple of things that they did do is they reached out to the school district because they wanted to check the dimensions of that soccer field before they finished actually putting it down. And it turned out when they sent the dimensions to Kevin, to Mr. Wenshaw, he shared it with Mr. Carpenter and they were a couple yards short of being the proper size to hold sectional games on, which is a mistake you don't want to make. There's a park up in Fort Dan, they made that mistake with several turf fields. They can't host any sectional events. And that Derby Park facility is going to be a top-notch place. We want to be able to host sectional games there if we can for our teams. So they've talked about the use from the beginning with the lights on the field, that our high school teams will be able to use the field, that our rec kids get to use the field, that our elementary kids get to use the field. We won't own the field, it's not ours. We're not trying to usurp control of the field. But certainly they want us to use it a lot. They know the kids are going to use it a lot. And we want to make sure that we're connected both through the intermunicipal agreement and through understanding on how we'll use it and how we'll support the maintenance of that field. And I'm always good about saying, let's get it in writing. So we all understand it now. And so 20 years from now, we're not saying, what did we say we were going to do? Who's going to mow the grass? Who's going to buy the paint? Maybe it won't be that specific, but you understand what I'm saying. So we'll talk about that more in the executive session. And then the COVID update, I just want to say publicly to the folks that are here and anybody who gets to watch this now or later, and to the board, I know the board has gotten my updates, so you're hearing about it. The number of cases that we've had and the positivity rate in our region and the vaccination rate in our region are things that are starting to be brought to my attention by the County Department of Health and our Schools' Medical Director and our State Epidemiologist. And I'm advocating for our kids to be in school. But I'm asking parents, I've done videos a few weeks in a row. Last week was different. I wanted to get a thankful one out there just saying, anybody in our community, if you can do anything to mitigate the spread of COVID in our community and in our school, I'm asking everybody to please help. We've got all those student athletes, all these students coming every day. And they're coming for stuff they need. And I use this analogy when I talk to people about this that are health officials. Because I'm not a health official and I'll never say I am. But I see our students coming to school as a necessary thing. This isn't luxury to come to school, it's necessary. We have students who come here every day. Some come to get a hot meal. Some get to see a positive adult. Some come to learn algebra. Some come to get speech services. Some come to see a school psychologist. These are things that kids need. These are not luxuries. And the analogy I use with the healthcare folks is that imagine if somebody said, you know what? There's some COVID spreading around your hospital. Let's just close it, send everybody home. Right, what would they say to me? And I get that I'm not being overly sarcastic about it. But that's how serious it is to me. They would say, no, this is stuff people need. They need this stuff. I say the same thing about what we're providing here. That being said, I want to say out loud, we need help because the numbers are going the way they're going. And at some point, no matter what advocacy I do, there's a point where safety becomes the thing I have to put in front of everything else. I don't want anybody to be sick. I certainly don't want anybody to be worse than sick. I'll say it that way. I don't even want to let the words come out of my mouth. But I want kids here, I take it very seriously. I mean that. I need any help. So if the folks that are out here tonight, if you can spread the word, anything people can do, I would really appreciate it. It's only because, it's not because I want everybody to be vaccinated. That's a person's choice. That's not what I'm trying to do. I just want to keep kids in school. And if these are the things that people are saying will help get the cases down, I'm asking for anybody who can do their little piece to do their little piece to help us keep this big thing rolling here. Because I'm super proud that our kids have been here. I know we've done good work for them. And it's been a lot of uphill work. I see Mrs., is that Mrs. Drewing out there?
It is.
A lot, a lot, sorry. A lot of uphill work. And frankly, it's taken a lot of work to get kids kind of back into a normal routine, which makes sense. I hate to lose that by finding out that we've got to be closed for a couple of weeks. Because a lot of momentum will be lost. And there's just so many people working so hard, including parents and caregivers at home. I fully recognize that. So that's my, I guess that's my soapbox piece. I'm thankful for the work that people are doing. I really am. I just have to ask, you know, if the people do anything else they can do to help us keep this thing moving forward the way that it is. Let's see, I think, I just wanted to mention again, if you haven't responded about the Hanzel meeting on the 18th. And I know Heidi, you mentioned it. But if you haven't, tomorrow's the last day for Kelly to register anybody new. So if you haven't told her you want to go, and you want to go, please let her know. So that we're in good shape there.
And just a reminder that it helps you hit your own personal goal that you set of attending two professional development sessions as a board, right? So if you haven't gone in yet, this is an easy one to get under your belt.
That's what I had. And I don't apologize for the soapbox, but I recognize that some of that sounds like a soapbox. But it's only because I want kids to be here.
Nope. Thank you for sharing, Dan. I think it's important that not only the board, but our community knows how potentially fragile a balance that we're in right now. And you know, thank you to everybody, both, you know, here in the district team, but also our parents and staff and students who are doing everything and they kind of, you know, again, try to help limit and curb the spread of this and keep kids in school. So, well said. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Ward before we move on? No? Okay. So we do have an anticipated need for an executive session tonight. And the need for that, as Mr. Ward previewed, is for a potential negotiation on an intermunicipality negotiation contract with the Hudson Falls Village. So with that, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session? Thank you. Heidi, second? Thank you, Amanda. All those in favor? Hi, okay, great. And I do believe we may have an anticipated action after this executive session. Is that correct, Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Depending on how the conversation goes.
Correct. The action would be in reference to a possible intermunicipal agreement. There wouldn't be any other thing we'd be trying to take action on. To my knowledge.
Correct.
The board would be trying to take action on tonight.
Correct.
So folks are going to wait out for us to come back in the session. We'll open the doors and open it back up to folks. But if nobody's out there, then we'll be in here by ourselves to finish the meeting.
Okay.
And thank you for coming.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, folks.
Good to see you again.